Welcome to today's Board of Commissioners zoning hearing this May 20, 2025. I'm pleased that we have Reverend Belle Tolbert of First United Methodist Church of Marietta. She is here to provide our invocation, which will be followed by the pledge. For those of you willing and able, please stand for both our invocation and pledge.
Let us pray. God of the mountains and God of the valleys and God of the spaces in between, you call us into this time to do work, to do work for our community and for our county and for our country and for the world. And so, O God, in all the work that we do this day, in this space, in this time, and beyond, may we seek your wisdom, may we have the discernment of your grace in all things, and may we be reminded, O God, that you guide us, you strengthen us, and you remind us always that we are loved by you. We pray these things in, through, and with your Spirit today and always. And all God's people say, amen.
Our pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend, for that invocation. Our meeting is now called to order, and I will turn things over to John Peterson, our zoning manager, to tee up today's agenda.
And thank you, Madam Chair and Board. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following processes and procedure. Each case will be called in American order. When the case is called, we would ask that the applicant please stand and raise their hand to show that they are in attendance. After that, we're going to call to see if there's anyone here opposed to that specific case. We would also ask that the opposition please stand and raise their hand so they can be counted for the official record. Then after recognizing both parties, they would be asked to come forward to be sworn in. The applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. It's important to note that each side gets 10 minutes to state their case of concerns. There's not a rebuttal process, and there's not a process to reserve your time, so please convey all your information to the board within your 10-minute time period. Additionally, if there's more than one person who wishes to speak on a case, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about because each side only gets 10 minutes, and you don't want to cover the same information over and over. After that, the board will start to discuss the case at hand. From the discussion, they may ask one or more speakers to come back to the front for additional comments or questions. Then the board make a decision to either approve, deny, hold, or continue the matter at hand. There are four cases on today's printed agenda which have been withdrawn without prejudice, and these cases will not be heard today. First case is LUP 20 of 2025, Alexis Houseneck. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice, it would not be heard today. Next case is Other Business Item Number 16 of 2025, Terrence Ralph. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice, it would not be heard today. Other Business Item Number 20 of 2025, Karen Singh. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice, it would not be heard today. And finally, Other Business Item Number 21 of 2025, George Gomez. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice, it would not be heard today. Madam Chair and Board, I did get word yesterday that there is another applicant who wishes to withdraw their case without prejudice. That's LUP 22 of 2025, Teo Acabinghan. And it's my understanding the applicant would like to withdraw this without prejudice, Madam Chair and Board, and this is in District 4.
Thank you, John. I'll turn things over to you, Commissioner Sheffield.
Thank you. I make a motion to withdraw LUP 22 without prejudice. LUP 22, 2025, without prejudice.
Second.
All right. Yes. Is there any discussion this morning?
Well, because the applicant here, and is there anyone here in favor or opposition?
Is the applicant here for LUP 22? Is it?
I believe he shared it's at the request of the applicant. Are there any other comments or questions? All right, we'll call the question. The matter carries for zero. Commissioner Allen is not here.
Thank you. Moving on to cases that have been held or continued, these cases will not be heard today either. First case is rezoning case Z2 of 2024, Florinori Development Group LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the July 1, 2025 Planning Commission's zoning hearing, so Z2 of 2024 will not be heard today. Res zoning case Z68 of 2024, Saks Ostel LLC. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the June 3, 2025 Planning Commission's zoning hearing, so Z68 of 2024 will not be heard today. Res zoning case Z7 of 2025, Fort and Cole Street LLC. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the June 3, 2025 Planning Commission's zoning hearing, so Z7 of 2025 will not be heard today. Res zoning case Z9 of 2025, Whataburger Restaurants LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the June 3, 2025 Planning Commission's zoning hearing, so Z9 of 2025 will not be heard today. Res zoning case Z10 of 2025, Revival Land Group LLC. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the June 3, 2025 Planning Commission's zoning hearing, so Z10 of 2025 will not be heard today. LUP 8 of 2025, Angela Benitez. This case was continued by the staff until the June 17, 2025 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing, so LUP 8 of 2025 will not be heard today. LUP 11 of 2025, Richard Gonzalez. This case was continued by the Planning Commission until the June 3, 2025 Planning Commission's zoning hearing, so LUP 11 of 2025 will not be heard today. LUP 12 of 2025, Jonathan Martin. This case was continued by the Planning Commission until the June 3, 2025 Planning Commission's zoning hearing, so LUP 12 of 2025 will not be heard today. LUP 18 of 2025, Artemo Cauldron. This case was continued by the Planning Commission until the June 3, 2025 Planning Commission's zoning hearing, so LUP 18 of 2025 will not be heard today. LUP 19 of 2025, Enel Salas. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the June 3, 2025 Planning Commission's zoning hearing, so LUP 19 will not be heard today. SLUP 2 of 2025, Free Bird Communications LLC. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the June 3, 2025 Planning Commission's zoning hearing, so SLUP 2 of 2025 will not be heard today. Other Business Item Number 22 of 2025, Whataburger Restaurants. This case was continued by the staff until the June 17, 2025 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing, so Other Business Item Number 22 of 2025 will not be heard today. Other Business Item Number 23 of 2025, Jamila Brown. This case was continued by the staff until the June 17, 2025 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing, so Other Business Item Number 23 of 2025 will not be heard today. And finally, Other Business Item Number 14 of 2025, David Pearson Communities Incorporated. This case was continued by the staff until the June 17, 2025 Board of Commissioners hearing, so Other Business Item Number 14 will not be heard today. Before we start on our planning commission, I do have two more announcements. I would like to ask the people in today's audience, if you have a cell phone, please turn the volume off on your phone. When the phones ring, it does interfere with the broadcast and the presentations. And I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party that information is due to this board the Wednesday prior to this date. Any information submitted after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their discretion. And with that, Madam Chair and Board, I'm ready to start the consent agenda.
Yes, John. Thank you.
Cobb County Board of Commissioners zoning hearing consent agenda for May 20, 2025. First case on consent is rezoning case Z11 of 2025, Harmony Wellness and Beauty Supplies LLC. Request rezoning from R20 to NRC for a retail wellness and beauty supply business in landlots 946 and 979 of the 19th District. The property is located on the southwest corner of Ostel Pounder Springs Road and Old Ostel Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of Z11 to the NRC zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, waive the buffer requirement adjacent to the R20 parcel to the south. Number two, driveway and parking to be paved and striped to county standards. Number three, refuse and designated recycling collection location facilities must be contained within a completely enclosed facility. Number four, fire department comments and recommendations. Number five, site plan review comments and recommendations. Number six, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Number seven, planning division comments and recommendations. Number eight, water and sewer division comments and recommendations. And number nine, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z11? Let the record show there's no one opposed. LUP 9 of 2025, Jose A. Escarrena. Request a temporary land use permit to allow occupancy of an accessory structure and more vehicles in landlot 773 of the 19th District. The property is located on the south side of King Arthur Drive, west of Castle Way. The Planning Commission recommends approval of LUP 9 for 12 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, applicant to apply for and submit a building permit for the accessory structure. Number two, building inspections to inspect the accessory structure within 30 days from today's date. Number three, the accessory structure must pass the inspection before it can be occupied. And number four, code enforcement to conduct quarterly inspections to verify compliance. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 9? Let the record show there's no one opposed. LUP 16 of 2025, Kevin D. Bowen. Request a temporary land use permit for musical instrument repair in landlot 640 of the 16th District. The property is located on the western side of Retreat Close, west of Retreat Drive. The Planning Commission recommends approval of LUP 16 for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, hours of operation shall be from 10:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays. From 10:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. on Wednesdays, and from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. on Saturdays. Number two, maximum of five customers per week. Number three, all customers by appointment only. Number four, no signage or outdoor or outside storage. Number five, all parking shall be in driveway. Number six, applicant shall be the only employee. Number seven, fire department comments and recommendations. Number eight, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Number nine, planning division comments and recommendations. Number 10, water and sewer division comments and recommendations. And number 11, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 16? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Thank you, John. Considering Commissioner Allen isn't here, I just want to confirm that he's communicated with you.
Yes, I did meet with Commissioner Allen. He's okay. We'll just be on consent.
Okay, and there's another matter on consent too.
Yes, we did talk about that also.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. LUP 17 of 2025, Resita Allen. Request a temporary land use permit for a speech coaching business, which is a renewal, in landlot 460 of the 17th District. The property is located on the east side of King Valley Drive, north of Cooper Lake Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of LUP 17 for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, maximum of five clients per day. Number two, all clients by appointment only. Number three, one employee. Number four, no signage. Number five, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Number six, fire department comments and recommendations. And number seven, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 17? Let the record show there's no one opposed. LUP 23 of 2025, Roger Alexander. Request a land use permit for vehicle parking, which is a renewal, in landlot 235 of the 16th District. The property is located on the west side of Cahilly Road, north of Myrtle Drive. The Planning Commission recommends approval of LUP 23 for 24 months, subject to the following condition. Vehicles be parked on a hardened surface. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 23? Let the record show there's no one opposed. SLUP 4 of 2025, Gear Holdings LLC. Request a special land use permit for an automotive storage club and light automotive repair in landlot 1010 of the 17th District. The property is located on the northwest side of Interstate North Parkway, east of Cumberland Boulevard. The Planning Commission recommends approval of LUP 4, subject to the following conditions. Number one, light automotive repair use shall be indoor only. Number two, no heavy automotive repair. Number three, maintain a landscape screening buffer of 40 feet along the property lines of budding residentially zoned properties. Number four, hours of operation shall be from 8:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m. on the weekday nights, and no later than 10:00 p.m. on the weekends. Number five, no running or revving of loud engines outdoors. Number six, all refuse and designated recycling collection location facilities must be contained within a completely enclosed facility. Number seven, no outdoor storage or outdoor display of merchandise. Number eight, fire department comments and recommendations. Number nine, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Number 10, planning division comments and recommendations. Number 11, water and sewer division comments and recommendations. And number 12, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to SLUP 4? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving to Other Business cases on the consent agenda. First case we're going to announce is Other Business Item Number 24 of 2025, which is to consider amending the stipulations for Chris Bryant regarding rezoning application Z34 of 2023. The property is located on the east side of Cobb Parkway, north of Autry Church Road, in landlot 2 of the 20th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, baseball training and batting cages are permitted. Number two, fire department comments. And number three, all previous stipulations not in conflict remain in effect. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to Other Business Item Number 24? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Other Business Item Number 25 of 2025 is to consider amending the stipulations for Gerkirpa Investors LLC regarding rezoning application Z25 of 2008. The property is located on the west side of Canton Road, south of Westerly Way, in landlots 660 and 709 of the 16th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to number one, buffer reduction only in areas shown on the site plan last revised April 16, 2025, due to the existing sewer and utility easements. And number two, all previous stipulations not in conflict remain in effect. The applicant is present? Is there anyone here opposed to Other Business Item Number 25? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
John, Commissioner Burrell has a comment.
Thank you. For the number one, the added stipulation, it says buffer reduction only in areas shown on site plan. The buffer is remaining. It's only the planning of the landscape that is, because of the easements, it's not available. So can we add just landscape buffer reduction only in the areas on the site plan?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. You're good with that, Mr. Hough?
Okay, our applicant gave the thumbs up.
So that's all I wanted to add.
And that completes the consent agenda, Madam Chair and Board.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any other changes? Commissioner Gamble.
John, I just need to clarify on OV24. I don't believe you read in Cobb DOT comments.
Yes, I did not, because they basically repeat the previous comments that are still made part of the record.
Okay, I just want to make sure that Cobb DOT is still applicable.
They are.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, any other comments or changes? All right, with that, commissioners, I move that we approve the consent agenda as it has been revised.
Second.
Are there any comments or questions? Call the question. The motion carries for zero. For any of our applicants whose matters were on the consent agenda, they have all been dispositioned. You are free to leave at this time unless you would like to observe the rest of the zoning hearing. All right, John, whenever you're ready.
Okay, moving into the regular cases. First case we're going to consider today is LUP 15, Emily Jordan. Request a temporary land use permit for a pediatric development camp in landlots 1259 and 1260 of the 16th District. The property is located on the north side of Paper Mill Road, east of Woodlawn Drive. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 15? One. Let the record show there's one person opposed. All those who would like to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Good morning. Thanks for having me.
Good morning.
Ma'am, I'll just mention to you that you start off by stating your name. You'll see there's a timer on the podium, and you have 10 minutes.
Okay, hopefully I don't talk all 10 minutes like I did last time. My name is Emily Jordan, and thanks for having me again. I am a mom of a one and three-year-old and an occupational therapist. I worked for a large hospital system as an OT and worked with adults during the COVID crisis, and I then left, had kids, and decided, I think this is a natural shift for me, to work with kids, since I'm in that world fully right now with a one and three-year-old. That being said, we bought a beautiful property in the fall. It's just over two acres, and I would love to be able to use our property, our private property, to host pediatric camps. And so, what that means and would look like depends on the age group of kids, but I'm just going to give you an example of two-year-olds, because that's my world right now. So, this would be a small camp. I think at the last meeting, it was approved for eight kids at a time, and it would be half-day. And this is a very intentional camp, so all of the activities would be age-appropriate and therapeutically based. So, my mom, who's a pediatric physical therapist, and my sister, who's a pediatric nurse practitioner, want to join me in this. And we would be investing in our kids' skills that would transfer from play, which, you know, everything's play-based for kids in therapy, but it could transfer to their home life, their school life, basically helping them become more independent and learn things like, like my one and three-year-old helped me cut vegetables for a salad. We would be teaching things like nutrition, gardening, basic things that they may not be getting taught in school. And then, another example would be an older group of kids. My, our general contractor has offered to teach basic tool use, welding, carpentry. Now, if we get to that point, we may, you know, this may look different. But we have professionals who are willing to invest in these kids at my home, and these are just connections we've met and people we've hired and used. So, I'm just, this is like a passion project. It doesn't pay our bills, like I mentioned two weeks ago, but I do feel kids need to be poured into, and maybe they're not getting that at home or in the school systems. So, that's kind of the background of what I want to do. If you go through my power, or my handout, so Busy Day is like what I would call the camp, and Busy is my one-year-old's nickname because she's very busy, and then Daily is my three-year-old, and I call her Day, so Busy Day. So, as far as the concerns that were brought up two weeks ago, which I think is later in the, if you look at, let's see what page. The second page is a flyer, a basic flyer I made, like a mock flyer, of what camp would look like and what my goals are for these kids. The third is my daughter just showing examples of things we would be doing, picking vegetables. And then I actually had her help me build one of our little garden tins, planters, so learning about basic tools and basic hardware, how to put things together, and that's like a, kind of like a fine motor skill. And then my little girl, my Busy, is on the right doing just some work at our window. But this camp would be all outdoors. I want no technology, all outdoors, just letting kids be kids, in my belief system. And then the little picture on the far right, like down on the far right, we visited a friend who has chickens. We don't have chickens, but my sister has 10 acres, grows her own food, has chickens, all the things. So, we talked about, you know, if we do get approved, we would love that opportunity to have her bring a few chickens and explain to kids, this is where an egg comes from, because I think a lot of kids have no, they've just lost that connection with nature, and that whole, the whole process of understanding, like, where does our food come from? This is important. Okay, so getting into like what the opposition brought up two weeks ago. The next page shows where we are off of Paper Mill. We're between Woodlawn and Johnson Ferry. And so, you can see, I took measurements, our total driveway width is 30 feet. So, there have been multiple times since we've lived here where I've been out, driving out in my Tahoe, which is a big car, trucks coming in, our contractors coming in in vans, and there's plenty of room outbound and inbound. And then up here, this Audi is someone that worked on our AV system, and I was able to pass her, and you can see how much space there was between the Audi and myself. So, the concern of how do cars get in and out, this is addressed here. It's, and at camp, we would have either me, my sister, or my mom directing traffic. We have two driveways where you can actually turn around. So, that would, as far as safety, that would not be a concern because we'd be managing that. The driveway, this bottom picture, I left this from two weeks ago. The timestamp is 8:59 a.m., and so you can see, it's like a steady flow of traffic, but it's not totally backed up traffic, okay? So, the next page is an aerial view of our property, and just like I said, it's, you're able to turn around in that driveway in front of the house. And then there's a little parking pad where you can turn around. So, that should be, there shouldn't be a safety concern there with cars. Considering this would be eight children max a week, that's eight cars coming in between 9:00 and 9:30, and then leave time 1:00 to 1:30. Again, like I said two weeks ago, they, which I know you all haven't heard this, but we've had tons of work done to this house because it's 25 years old. We've had five-plus cars, trucks, all the people coming in, and we've never had an issue with anything being backed up on Paper Mill. Potential effects, I know I'm about to- Potential effects, I know I'm about to, in two minutes. I said minimal traffic. Again, if you can see this little red mark I made, this is our neighbor's home. He just finished building after two years. We bought his home, he moved next door. That whole, like where my red line is, trucks, not 18-wheelers, but the next size down of, like freight trucks lined up, like I'm telling you, probably 10 to 20 cars, people, tons of people there. Like, we just, we were like, this is a huge operation. So if there was going to be any traffic or accidents or whatever, it would have been from that. And we didn't witness any of that. Everyone was very alert and aware and cordial. And so they were able to back, back up onto Paper Mill. It just, that was a big operation. I think what I'm doing is very small compared to as far as disrupting Paper Mill. And then, you know, of course, everything's gated. Our property, it's very secluded, it's a very mature landscape, so there really is no noise. I've heard our neighbors who threw a party this weekend, and it was like, you know, they had a band. But other than that, we rarely hear anybody. Like a blower in the back occasionally, a leaf blower. And then I just included pictures of, these are, it's kind of like pictures of, I tried to like sneak in the fences to show you like how secluded it is to our neighbors. And then I have had a conversation with our neighbor who we bought his home, and he was all for this. He has two girls as well, so he's on board. I walked over to the neighbor on the other side. They don't look like they live there, so I didn't get them. But, and I did send everybody the certified mail. Had nobody call me or anything like that. And then the last page is just like sample schedule and goals I hope to achieve. But I just really want to invest in our kids and do it on my private property. I think it's a blessing that I get to, hopefully get to do this, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. We'll now hear from anybody who's here in opposition. You'll have a total of 10 minutes to address the board. Okay, you can begin whenever you're ready.
Madam Chairwoman, Commissioners, my name is Richard Grom. I will be presenting East Cobb Civic Association's opposition to this request as our case manager has a business conflict. This proposal has been a moving target with regard to specifics that the applicant is requesting. The applicant wants to hold a pediatric camp during the summer, particulars of which seem to be very flexible. What would be offered at the camp? We have been told planned activities. Where on the property is yet to be established? How many children? The applicant has proposed everything from five to 12 children. How many employees? The applicant state, the application states one. The applicant has said maybe two. How many volunteers? The application says some, with no specific numbers given. How many days a week? The applicant has said as few as four days a week. However, the application requests Monday through Friday and maybe Saturday. How many hours per day? The applicant has said maybe three hours for small children. The application requests six hours. And we have seen no circulation plan for traffic on the driveway during drop-off and pickup, which ECCA believes will be a problem. Recommendation from the staff to the Planning Commission was denied. The Planning Commission, to ECCA's surprise, recommended approval, with restrictions they felt cut back the intensity of the applicant's original proposal. Restrictions included, the camp would operate during the months of June, July, and August only for one week per month, with a maximum of eight children. Operating hours to be from 9:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. A small sign to be placed near the mailbox, but only during each week of operation and must otherwise be removed. And code enforcement is to monitor the operation, as if they don't have other things to do. Even with these restrictions, this does not address the main point of this case. This is a precedent-setting case. The Planning Commission approval with restrictions failed to address how this does not set a precedent for Cobb County. Approval of this LUP would set a negative precedence for allowing homeowners in residential zonings to use their property for summer camps. This is not a home occupation. It has too many clients visiting the home at the same time and is too intense for a business operated from a residence. Cobb County Code for R-80 Residential gives the definition of a customary home occupation as those occupations which are customarily performed in a small area of residence due to the low-intensity nature of such uses, subject to the following requirements. There shall be no exterior evidence of the home occupation, including but not limited to the type, any type of identifying signs. And such use shall be conducted entirely within the dwelling unit. And only persons living in the dwelling unit shall be employed in such occupation. This is a camp for children, even if the applicant only operates it for one week a month during the summer. A business with this intensity belongs on a property that allows day camps or daycare not in a residential neighborhood. In addition, the property is located on Paper Mill Road, which is a major thoroughfare, especially now since Lower Roswell Road is under construction and Paper Mill is used as an alternative route for traffic. There is no traffic circulation plan for drop-off or pickup. There will be eight to 12 cars slowing down on this major busy thoroughfare to locate and enter the property, all at approximately the same time, not just for a one-day party, but twice a day for drop-off and pickup for a week, with parents arriving and leaving, trying to pass each other on a residential driveway, as well as employees and volunteers coming and leaving from the camp. The applicant has stated that the driveway is 30 feet wide at the entrance. Is it 30 feet wide all the way to the house? What's the width of the driveway halfway to the house? Due to its length and topography, you cannot see the house or end of the driveway from Paper Mill Road. With a single-car driveway, how will the cars pass each other on a hardened surface during pickup and drop-off? Where will there be adequate designated parking? There will also be additional noise, like a children's party, except not just for one day, but every day for a week each month during the summer. ECCA recommends denial of this LUP. It will set a negative precedent should the Board of Commissioners allow such a business in a residential neighborhood. And this is not a home-based business that should be permitted in a residential zoning due to the number of clients visiting the home all at the same time, all at the same time. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Richard. I don't believe there's anyone else here in opposition. Okay, not seeing any, I'll turn things over to you, Commissioner Burrow.
Ms. Jordan, could you come back up for a few questions?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Do you have a, other than the picture, the diagram of the cars coming and going, is there a traffic plan for them to turn around? Or what's, what is, normally when we have daycare or camps, there's just maybe a circular driveway where they can drop off and keep going.
Right.
I didn't know how this would work.
I don't have a traffic plan, and I'm not an attorney, so I don't, I didn't, I mean, I have a plan in my head, and it's executing it is, like, I know how I'm going to do it, but I understand that we need more details, so I'm happy to do that. I'm also happy to have code come out, or whoever needs to come out. But if you look at the, let's look at the picture, the aerial, with my red and blue arrows. Oh, okay, great. Sorry, it's not super professional because I don't use a whole lot of technology generally. But my thought was to stand, like where our driveway's split. And what I can do is, let's say, yeah, let's say a car comes in, they drop off at the front, like at our steps with myself or another person working. And this is all fluid. Like, when I did this application, I put what I thought at the time, you know, we were going to do. But this is, I'm willing to be flexible with hours and kids and all that. Anyways, so we'd be standing, take the kid, the car, a car could go to the left side, park in that pad, back up, and then reverse to the blue line, back out, to pay, to like down our driveway. So we've had parties where people have been able to pass down, yes, it's not 30 feet across the whole driveway. But we have had a party or two where there's lots of people, and they're able to get out fine. And it's, for us, it's like if you are up on our, like, the side of the driveway, there's bricks lining it, so even if a car goes up on that, it's okay for us. I haven't, I don't have a formal traffic pattern, but that was kind of my thought was, take, take the child out of the car at the front steps. And then the mom or dad or caretaker can go to that pad, reverse, and go back out. But we also have the driveway that goes all the way up to the right side. And we are able to turn around our cars, there's garages up there. But I'm able to turn around my Tahoe in the driveway without going into the, so that's a, it's just a really wide driveway. So if, if we needed to use both, we could, for cars to be able to go up, drop off, and then turn around. I just honestly, this is like a very small operation. Like, I, this isn't 100 kids at a YMCA camp. I think it feels like, the person who called me opposing, he didn't say anyone was opposing, he just had questions. And then I got here and they were hardcore opposing me. So I felt very unprepared in that manner. And I really wish whoever it is opposing me would have called me directly to talk about it. But here we are. So that's, that's my thought with the cars. And obviously, we're very safe. I have a one and a three-year-old. I'm not going to let cars just go do what they want to do and me not be there to, you know, protect the kids.
Okay, and one other question. I still think backing into the space on the left and then pulling out with other cars dropping off, it may be too congested. But I know you said that you wanted to do, do this at Planning Commission, you said one week for the months of June, July, and August, the summer. Are you, if this is approved today, are you planning to start your camp this June 1?
It would not, that wouldn't work. I mean, logistically, and we would need to get some marketing material out and get kids to sign up. And we have summer plans too, so, I mean, realistically, probably July and August. And I'm, like I said, I'm flexible with the amount of weeks. When I left, I was like, man, I really, I wish we could do, you know, a little more than three weeks this summer. But who knows, maybe kids don't sign up for this. I mean, it's, I would price it higher because they're getting therapeutic activity, not just like free play. So it's, you know, it's kind of up in the air with who signs up. But I'm flexible. I don't know who helps with traffic patterns, but in Cobb County, but I'm happy if they wanted to come out and see if it's doable. I'm happy to have them.
Okay, John, do we have, I don't see anybody from DOT unless I'm not recognizing somebody. Do we have anybody here from DOT? Or did they give us any comments on the traffic?
And Commissioner Burrow, their only comment was not to park in the right-of-way. Their comment was recommend no parking on the right-of-way.
Okay. Well, I don't think that was stated anyway. I mean, I don't think she's proposing to park on the right-of-way anyhow.
Yeah, and that's their standard comment for land use permits.
Right, but my concern is the traffic plan in and out. And there's nobody here, right, from DOT?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
One more comment, if it's okay. I'm thinking, as far as his concern about people finding it on Paper Mill, yes, you can't see our home from the road, you can see the mailbox. But if we do this, it would make sense to send a video. Hey, this is where we are, this is how you get to the home, look for this mailbox, whether you're coming down Woodlawn, you know, or from Johnson Ferry.
Excuse me, ma'am, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to intercheck and just ask that you directly answer the question because her asking you questions right now isn't an opportunity to exceed the amount of time you have to present. But thank you for sharing our concerns right now, just pertaining to the movement of vehicles in the driveway.
That's all I had. Anybody else has any comments?
Yes, anybody else? Commissioner Gambrell.
My only concern is in her advertising, you know, she's saying she's going to be doing things in the kitchen and such. So we typically know that when you do that, it has to be a certified kitchen. They have to have certain standards and specifications. And we kind of learned that during COVID when our nonprofits weren't able to make meals to then give out to residents. They had to go to certified kitchens in order to do so. We couldn't do it out of homes. So, and I just need a yes-no answer from you. You know, are you going through the process to have your kitchen certified in order to instruct from your kitchen?
No, because I won't be doing instruction from the kitchen. It'll be at tables, like outside. I have a bunch of little kids' tables we use for play, so that could be, it wouldn't be cooking, like overheat. Does that make, does that, does it make sense? Like, it may be vegetables on a platter and we're practicing cutting on a table.
Well, again, while I, while I understand that, your advertisement here is meal prep. So knowing what some of the laws are and knowing certifications, you know, you're asking the board to balance if this is a commercial use or if this is a residential use. And that's, that again is where I'm struggling with this. John, question for you, please. When, because like in-home childcare is allowed in residential, how many, how many children are allowed typically when it's in-home childcare?
Yes, in-home childcare is allowed in every, our district we have in zoning. And you're allowed to have up to six children. But the thing that kind of limits that is you're not allowed to have any employees with those six children.
And then do all other state regulations apply to the home? That they have to be like the certified kitchen and?
Yeah, so they have to be approved by the state to be a daycare.
So Ms. Jordan, were you going to get state approval prior to conducting your camps to do so?
I'm happy to do that, if I need to.
But you have not done that yet.
I don't, mm-mm, I haven't even looked into that process.
Commissioner Sheffler?
Thank you, that was actually one of my questions regarding the state. But with reference to the driveway, how wide is the driveway? And at the entrance, I think it was 30 feet is what I read, but how? But how wide is it as you travel along the driveway?
I didn't measure that. But I am able to pass. I would have to get you the exact information.
Okay, well, let me ask this way. If two vehicles are passing, would both be able to fit on the driveway? You mentioned earlier that there were brick pavers, I think, on one side of the driveway. So if you're passing, would a vehicle have to use the brick pavers, I'm assuming?
I think it depends on the size, like the width. I mean, we, we have a big car in a sedan, I mean SUV in a sedan, and we can pass each other. But yeah, I think we would just need to, I need to get you exact numbers for, you know, the width.
Okay.
Commissioner Sheffield, if you look on your screen, the GI, our folks measured it for us and it comes out to 14.05 feet.
Oh, 14 feet, okay. And the standard width, Joan, I think, is it 24 or 18?
For, for two-way traffic, it's 24 feet.
24 feet, okay. So this is about 10 feet shy. Okay, thanks.
Back to me. Okay.
If no one else has any other questions?
I do have questions, but I don't want to keep you from...
I'm done with questions, I just...
Okay, I just want to share that we're asking a lot of questions as far as operation, but I want to commend you for having an idea and moving forward with it. And particularly being a mom, it's overwhelming experience, especially with young children. And then to think about other people's children, I commend you for that. It's a lot of work.
Thank you.
And it takes a lot to think beyond your own. A lot of the questions we're asking today and the community has interest in is because it's a great business idea. The concern is for impact beyond the site, but also for safety within it. I can speak from my own experience. I have two children. Both of them attended daycares in settings that were in a home-like environment that exceeded six children, which makes me perceive that they were zoned for business. They actually had signage outsides as a business. But they were situated in areas that were primarily homes. And so I have seen much smaller driveways be able to accommodate many more children. But I can say that they were much wider to accommodate the back and forth of traffic. And so the concerns that are being shared, I know we're considering them for how we zone other matters, but I can also speak from a personal matter in one of those settings that even when it's wider, it can still be tight. And so it takes a lot of mindfulness. There are some things that you can do from a physical perspective to make the area easy to travel. But then there's just some things you're going to have to articulate to parents about being mindful of others. So just, we're looking at what are going to be your policies to ensure that this is going to be a safe practice onsite and then that it's not going to have a harmful impact for those, whether they're driving by or those that may be living nearby. And I commend you also for getting support of your neighbor. The parking element might be something that, again, or the traffic pattern information is something that you would have to flesh out. I mean, I'm pretty sure our staff is helpful, but we would perceive that the onus is on you because this is your application to ensure you're providing. That's my thought, John. I don't want to speak ahead, but, you know, I don't know if we have staff onsite that would work with the applicant and make suggestions or...
Well, it really depends on...
Something that we can direct her to do.
It really depends on what department, like, you know, regarding the traffic and parking. You know, we can, we can definitely have DOT meet out there and give suggestions as to what has to be widened, what can be widened, you know, where the parking should be. You know, we could have the fire marshal go out and take a look. You know, one thing the board probably needs to ask is, you know, this house was CO'd as a house when it was built 20 years ago, 25 years ago. What would have to be done to bring the CO off to a daycare or higher occup, uh, uh, higher occupancy rate? So I think we need to hear from, from Jeff Bird about that. What, what has to be done to make this a safe daycare-type environment?
Yes, and I think that gets to a lot of the questions that are being asked. Should that be the standard that we're looking to achieve for what she is attempting to do for the summer months? Should we look for her to meet that daycare, at, at least a minimum of that daycare standard?
It, it should be because, you know, the daycare standards are in place to protect the safety and welfare. So it should meet that standard.
Okay. So again, I, I commend you in what you're doing, but I also recognize the significance of ensuring that there are just certain standards that are being met because it helps us know that the activity onsite is going to be mindful of that safety and welfare that we, that other expert matter, or subject matter experts have imposed on similar settings.
Sure, okay. Well, I'm happy to do what you suggested with bringing people out and... I'm, yeah, I'm open to suggestions. And if it doesn't make sense safety-wise with the driveway, maybe we can come up with change or solution. And if not, maybe I can, you know, rent a space. We just have such a special property, I just wanted to be able to share it.
Stop, I'll turn things over.
I do have one more question. The application indicates that you'll have one employee and two to five volunteers. What, what would be your backup plan if you cannot find volunteers for a given week?
That's, this is fluid. So I would like volunteers to be able to help, you know, just me with the shifting of activities and... But I don't think they're absolutely necessary. I'm a master's degree OT, so if it's a small group of children that is in the, you know, with the roles here, I'm, I'm confident I'm able to manage the six to eight children. I do have my mom and my sister who are wanting to join. So I don't know if they would be considered employees or, okay.
Oh, I'm saying, I'm listening like I agree with your thoughts of considering that. Not that I'm saying that is the case that they are.
So it could be where we don't have volunteers and it's the three of us. Or if it's a smaller group, I'm confident I'm able to handle them.
Okay, John, just as a follow-up, what's the state requirement for adult per child?
I'm not sure what that is, Commissioner.
Okay, all right, thanks.
What, what you were referring to before was for daycare? That's different for summer camp, or?
I'm not sure you know...
I'm just using that as a guide.
That would have to be submitted to the, this whole concept would have to be submitted to the state and to the county health department and, you know, kind of figure out what has to be done.
Yeah. So are you turning this back over to me now?
Yes, Commissioner, it is, yes, ma'am. Please take it.
You do have a beautiful property. And I too commend you on what you're trying to do for the kids or children in the community. But this really, to me, is not appropriate in a residential area. Even though you've got over two acres, you've got, you know, wide driveways, but in some areas. I, I am concerned about the turnaround and the, or the traffic dropping off and picking up. But it's not a home-based business. It's not allowed. And I do think it would set a precedent. And if we give it to you, we're going to have to do it somewhere else. And I just, I don't think it's appropriate for a residential area. So I know staff recommended denial. I know Planning Commission tried to give you something that they, that you could work with. But I'm not, I'm not, a lot of stuff was brought up today that they didn't address. So if we hold it for all this state stuff and requirements and all to go through, I mean, is that the preference of the board or, I, I just don't think it's appropriate?
Commissioner Gambrell?
So I would rather deny it. I, again, I think she's got a great concept, but I think there's a lot more homework that needs to be done and evaluations that she needs to do as a property owner that, you know, can she do things to bring her driveway into compliance, to meet a parking ordinance, to maybe then be able to come back with something that is more in line with an in-home childcare? Maybe not to the extent that she's promoting here, but what can she do to stay within the lines of the code? I think there's a lot of homework you need to do in that, between getting certified, making sure your kitchen, your driveway, and all of that is. So I would rather deny it and give her the opportunity to go back and do these things because more than likely, it will not be achieved by the, by the end of August, which is the timeline that the Planning Commission gave her to do her camps. And, you know, I would encourage you to reach out and work with our chamber. There's small business section. I'd also encourage you to meet with our commissioner during this process, you know, prior to coming back and potentially submitting another concept for consideration.
Along, go ahead, Commissioner, I'm sorry, John.
I hate to break in here, but, you know, I think at this point in time, it would be better for her to ask for a withdrawal without prejudice. Because if you do that, what you do is bring it back, you know, whenever you're ready. If this is a denial, then you can't come back here for 12 months. So I think the thing to do is ask the board to withdraw this without prejudice. And then you can bring it back when you're ready, when you go through all these other steps.
Sure. And if, I mean, I don't know if this is appropriate to, to bring here, but maybe this changes to a one-on-one, me and a child in a therapy session. But that would be also a business at my home.
Yeah, and, and one thing that, that you could do in the time, you know, say this is withdrawal without prejudice, you know, you're still, you're still allowed to have an in-home daycare in your home for up to six children, but you cannot have any employees. So the six children do not include your own children. So what you may want to do is give us a test run with your, with, with your two kids and maybe two or three other kids over the summer as an in-home daycare and just see how it goes. And the permitting process for that, you know, you, you, you will have to go through the state, through the county, and through the fire marshal to get a new CO on the occupancy of the house.
Okay.
So that might be a better thing to do is just give it a test run this summer with, with less children as a daycare.
Sure. And I wanted to do this the right way and come here. I have, my child actually went to something like this and she's like, I didn't go to Fulton County, where she has it. So I think if I hadn't have, there, no one, maybe nobody would know, but I wanted to do it the right way, so. And then, do, do you recommend getting an attorney to help me communicate my?
It, it, it depends on, on your level of confidence and, and, and your, 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 your level of knowledge.
Yeah, I'm an OT free-spirit thinker, so I'm not in the books like y'all with the...
And you're doing well so far, you just need some more time to, to get all the other things tied up as far as the traffic in the kitchen and everything else.
Right, okay. Can I, who should I reach out to to get a list of all? I wrote down notes, but all of the things I would need to get approval of?
One thing you can do is we have an Economic Development Department that has a concierge service that works with people who are starting businesses from soup to nuts. They are located with our Community Development Department. They can sit down with you and talk through your concept and connect you with persons who they sit with to help you through this process. So I could have someone from my team here, my executive assistant is here, can give you the name of Sabrina Wright with Economic Development.
Okay, great.
And John Peterson for zoning.
And now you know our zoning manager too. And she can connect you with him, you can connect with him directly. He has a team of, and people who are very adept in our, in all things zoning, who I'm sure will be happy to sit down with you as well.
Okay.
So I need to make a motion to withdraw? Are you agreeable to withdrawing without prejudice?
Yes.
Okay. So she's withdrawing without prejudice? I make a motion that we withdraw Lot 15 without prejudice.
Okay, is there a second?
And can I add direction to work with staff?
Yes, please, go ahead, Commissioner.
And zoning for a better plan with the, with us and the state.
Would you like that to be a part of your motion?
Yes.
That comment? Okay, do you second that, Commissioner?
Yes, second.
Okay.
Can I just ask one question?
I'm sorry, this is, not at this time. But why don't we, we'll take a recess for five minutes right after this matter. You can feel free to come up here and speak to the Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion from the board? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0. Thank you, we'll recess until 10:10. All right, good morning, everybody, and welcome back to our Board of Commissioners zoning hearing this May 20th, 2025. I will turn things over to you, John, to queue up our next case.
Next case is LUP 21, Timothy Davis, request a temporary land use permit for backyard chickens in Nellot 303 of the 20th District. The property is located on the western side of Pavilion Drive across from Charles Court. Is the applicant present?
Yes, sir.
The record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 21? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward to
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Tim Davis. My wife and I lived in Cobb County all of our life, and we've had chickens several times before, never at the location where we're at now. We have chickens just for solely use of the eggs due to health issues between her and I both. So the last time we were here, we agreed to reduce the amount of chickens that we have from 12 to eight over the next two years at this point, since two weeks ago or so, we're down to 11 chickens already due to natural disasters, I guess, in the chicken flock. So we're already halfway there to the agreed of reducing to two chickens in the next year and then two more chickens after that.
All righty, sir. Does that conclude your presentation for the board?
You're welcome.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it? Okay. What I'm going to do, since there is no opposition that's here, I'm going to turn things over to Commissioner Gamble, who will then deliberate your matter, and she'll call you up if she needs you. So don't go too far.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gamble, you can begin whenever you're ready.
Yep. And while I understand a lot of people would like backyard chickens for their own use and consumption, I completely agree with that. And but unfortunately, our code is very specific as far as how many chickens are allowed. And in this case, it is three hens that would be allowable on this property. I am having a very hard time supporting a land use permit to allow more than what is permitted by code. So I don't know if anybody has questions for the applicant, because what I heard was it is just he and his wife. Three hens, which is allowed by code, would give them, you know, essentially at least three eggs a day during laying season.
May I say something?
Excuse me, sir. You can if the commissioner calls you back up or have a question. That's okay.
But, you know, it was stated that, you know, he shares the eggs with his neighbors. So that's where, again, I like the neighborly sharing, but I am not able to support this land use permit, but do support him having his three hens, which would be allowed by code under that section that he would have to get a permit for.
Okay. John, if you can help clarify for us, the number of chickens for a certain amount of acreage, is that a permit by right? Or do you still need to come in for the land use permit?
It is a permit by right. You're allowed to have one hen per 5,000 square feet of lot area. You do have to register with code enforcement for the backyard chicken permit, but it's something that does not cost any money and something that does not require a public hearing. It's used by right.
So whenever we have had hearings on this matter, it has been to exceed that permitted number by right?
Correct.
And we have approved land use permits for additional backyard chickens before.
I will answer I will answer that. I will answer that one. I will answer that one.
I've been here. I mean, I let me just. I'm asking I'm asking John. I'm asking John for a reason.
Not under this scenario. We have not.
I'm asking John for a reason, and then please let me respond. We have approved land use permits for requests for backyard chickens in the past.
That's something I would have to do some research on, Sher Cupid, because, you know, the chicken thing's been going on for about 10 years now.
Yeah.
And I know we have rejected a lot of them, but I'll have to go back and look at the ones.
If we've ever approved a backyard chicken?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Gamble, I'm going to go to Commissioner Gamble first, Commissioner Burrell, and then I'm going to come to you, because I know you and I both have a lot of history.
I have a history here.
Yes, ma'am.
So we might have approved land use permits, but back in 2020 is when we first started changing our ordinance to allow backyard chickens. And at that time, it became, again, a process which John just described, which meant the Board of Commissioners no longer had to hear those cases because they were permitted by right.
Okay.
As far as, yes, you have heard land use permits in my districts, but they have been approved for pigs. So we we had a couple folks that had pigs. So yes, we have approved land use permits for animals that are not typically what we think as animals that most have. But again, we did have a couple exceptions, but those land use permits have now expired because those animals are no longer on the property.
Okay, Commissioner Burrell.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, when I first came on the board, the BZA heard variances for any poultry chickens less than two acre lots. And there were variances granted for that at that time when it was under BZA. Then we moved to a land use permit for any any number under two acre lots. And that came before the board, planning commission and board to approve. And yes, we did approve some at that point. Now, the law, the code is one per 5,000 square feet on your property, you register with community development, we never hear it. So this gentleman is before us today to get an exception to the code or variance for more than one per 5,000 square feet.
Okay.
And to my knowledge, under that code, which you said was done in 2020, I'm not aware of any that have come to us for more than the one per 5,000 square feet lot, foot lot. I'm not aware of any that we've approved as like the case before, it's additional.
We did have one, and it was in your district. I don't remember which road it was on, but it was similar to this. They had, you know, a number of hens that exceeded and we did deny, but they also had goats and other animals as well on their property.
That was when it was.
That one was denied.
That was when we had to approve it as a law.
Right.
And we have approved some in my district that as when it was a law, but I don't know of any that have come to us since the one per 5,000 square foot lots were implemented in 2020 to just register with the community development. I'm not aware, but you can research that as the chairwoman asks and let us know.
And I ask that, and maybe that's secondary to another point, is that we have code and then we have a process for considerations beyond the code, which is why we have zoning hearings. Because if everything were to be determined administratively, there'd be no reason for us to be here on third Tuesdays. We allow the public to have an opportunity to petition for our consideration for circumstances that would elevate beyond what the code shares. So I don't want to give a sense that people don't have the opportunity to petition their elected officials because we only do things that adhere to the code, or else we would be no more than an extension of administration of this county. And we are elected officials of this county, which gives us the ability to consider other surrounding circumstances with an application that comes before us. And something that I see in this application that I did not see in the prior application is a long list of people in his community that are supportive of this use. Now, what I am not saying that having eight chickens on this parcel is appropriate, but I do perceive that this is uniquely positioned from a lot of the historic cases that Commissioner Burrell and I have sat here and listened to when you had surrounding neighbors in vehement opposition to to having this use on their property. That is not the case here. And I'd have to, I mean, generally, it's not the case. I have not taken the time to look at each individual address to know if the immediate adjacent neighbors signed off on this petition. But I would just ask for our board to consider our position as being elected by the public, but who are also who are also stewards of our practices here in the county, which gives us the opportunity to consider both. And I would ask for some flexibility, we weren't hearing matters from the public, to consider things beyond our code, or else we would be no more than being bureaucrats of our process. Again, I'm not saying that the smaller amount is not appropriate. I just I'm concerned of we convey that we are just only adhering to our code. I'll turn things back over to you, Commissioner Gamble, if there are no more questions.
So I'd like to make a motion to deny LUP 21 of 2025 and give the applicant until November 1st of 2025 to come in compliance with the backyard chicken code, which is section 134, 290.
I'll just comment again, I'm supportive of the commissioner's motion. I do think that there's opportunity for us to consider when there is great community support and something that is different. But this is in the commissioner's area, and I want to support the approach that she's taken in this in this particular matter. Are there any other comments or questions? We'll call the question. The motion carries four zero. Well, this is a very short zoning hearing day. Thank you all for being here with us today, and our meeting is now adjourned.
Motion.
I'm sorry, our meeting is not adjourned. Let me withdraw that. We have a unique circumstance where the commissioners do need to go into executive session. So commissioners, I move that we go into exec.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please raise your hand, or you can go ahead. I'll call the question since we're here on the dais and we're not upstairs. The motion carries four zero. Commissioners, why don't we convene upstairs at 10:40? Thank you.